Can everybody please stand for the flag salute? In accordance with the Old Public Meetings Act, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the record and posting notice of this meeting in Borough Hall and the Superintendent's Office. I hereby hope to order the public meeting of the Little Ferry Board of Education, Thursday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh four P M. Can I have a roll call, please?
Alex, Mr. Spetholi, Mr. Pytro, Mr. Nan, Mr. Mealing, Mr. Lucuzzo, Mr. Borisak, Mr. Sal, Mr. Bradley, Mr. Stanislaw.
Being resolved with the Little Ferry Board of Education approves the minutes of the regular public meeting held on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Alex is absent, Spetholi, Pytro, Nan.
Yes.
He's absent, Lucuzzo's absent, Mr. Borisak.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bradley.
Yes.
Going to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. When I open up to Mr. Parapato to provide his superintendent report?
Uh, I just want to real quick before we get to our superintendent report, uh, thank the teachers and staff, administration, uh, Mr. Alvin, his crew, uh, for just a great start to the school year. Um, things have started off, you know, my message just here was positivity. Um, I think it's been embraced so far, um, throughout, so just wanted to say thank you, uh, really everyone, the board included. Two quick updates. The re-registration process for Virgil Park High School is all but complete. So far to date, it has resulted in, I call fourteen findings, uh, so fourteen students that have are no longer on call for a myriad of different reasons. It doesn't mean that they were doing anything wrong. It just means that, uh, from start to finish, it was very successful. I really want to thank Alex House, um, and Leanna, uh, Ulo for their support and the help throughout that process, along with anybody that was called upon to help. The athletics sidebar was discussed tonight in executive session, so there is a resolution or agenda added tonight. The agenda that will be read before they take the vote. And our next board meeting was scheduled for October sixteenth. It was moved to October thirtieth. That'll be advertised and all that good stuff, but it will be October thirtieth. So before I get to Mr. Dunn at the NJSLA D L M report, the status, I'm not ready for the full name yet. I was being coached, but I'm not ready at all on my risk. So with that being said, welcome. It's, it's going to be a pleasure to have you this year. I think Mr. Reynolds and the team made a really, really great decision. And with that, you have the floor. There you go. I swear, I ordered your name tag. All right, uh, Mr. Dunn.
Uh, thank you all. Good evening. Uh, so tonight I'll be doing the NJSLA and D L M, uh, result presentation. Uh, so the D L M is the Dynamic Learning Map. It is given to our students who, um, are given an alternate assessment to measure their aptitude in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, smaller students who have been specifically identified, uh, based upon, uh, their special needs. The NJSLA, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment is given to all students in grades three through eight in E L A, math, and science in grades five through eight, uh, and it is based on the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Uh, so first up is our D L M data. Uh, it is a smaller subgroup overall, so there are eleven total students, including our out of district students who took the placement, uh, took the assessment. Um, therefore, um, any groups that are less than ten, and once you start to, uh, disaggregate the data, I, I cannot report it. Uh, so I can just give some overall findings without really naming anyone. Uh, first, I want to thank Emily Nicholson. Did an awesome job, um, administering the D L M to all of our students here. Uh, it was a lot managed. She was very efficient, very effective, set up an awesome schedule to make sure that it met our students' needs and allowed them to have access to it. Uh, and overall, the students did really well. We saw improvement from last year. I can't fault them. But I can generally speak that they did all improve, and that's really a testament to Mr. Davis. All right, NJSLA, our student learning assessment. Um, so it breaks down into, uh, five areas of scoring, so from level one to level five, uh, did not meet, partially meets, approached, met, and then exceeded. Uh, that's for the E L A and math. For science, there are four levels, um, did not meet, partially met, met, and exceeded, uh, those, and then it's broken down by suburbs. All right, so start off with celebrations. So what went really well? Uh, our grade five science had a sixty-eight percent overall increase from twenty percent passing last year to thirty-three percent passing this year. Our overall science numbers returned to their pre-COVID numbers, so, uh, we've returned to our scores from twenty nineteen. That's a testament to the science team. I call the teachers as they score the just sign assessment. There's a lot of reading in there. Uh, grades, uh, six math scores that cohort from fifth grade to sixth grade had a seventy-two percent increase in their overall score, uh, from twenty twenty-four. Uh, grade eight E L A, Miss Sun had the highest scores, uh, post-COVID. That's a testament to all the work that the eighth grade team, especially Miss Sun. And then our, our bubble boost, which is an intervention that we do, uh, we saw was the most effective for our students who were truly on the bubble, scoring at seven forty to seven forty-nine, which is just below the past number of seven fifty. So, uh, well over fifty percent of those students who received that intervention went on fast. Um, a little, uh, aside on our new students, uh, so the average about ninety to one hundred and ten new students every year. Uh, and it's been that way for the, uh, five years that I've been here. Uh, we are on, we are beyond on track to that. We're at, uh, forty-eight, forty-nine. It does move every day, so we, we are receiving a lot of new students. Uh, so last year, fifty-two new students in Washington School, forty-four in Memorial School. Uh, of those eighteen were multilingual learners. Uh, that was actually below our average from last year. We were close to forty, but on average, we are about twenty to twenty-five multilingual learners per year. Eight in Washington School, ten in Memorial. At the time of year, eighteen of those ninety-six new students, uh, came to us mid-year or later. Uh, some of them are rolling in, uh, just weeks before we put the assessment, uh, and still have to take that assessment. All right, so how did we do? Uh, so this chart shows all the levels, uh, going from, uh, top to bottom. We have science, math, and E L A, and you can see from left to right, we have twenty nineteen, obviously the COVID gap in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and then our performance, uh, in twenty twenty-two to this year. So, starting the bottom going up, science, you can see that we were at twenty-three percent, uh, pre-COVID in twenty nineteen, and today are this year rather at the district, we return to that level at twenty-three percent. So a very nice increase. You can see that trending up. Uh, math, uh, took a small dip, uh, comparatively from last year, two percent down, but we still are, you know, almost on that upward trajectory. Uh, we did implement three new math curriculums last year across K two, three, five, and six, eight. Um, so that has something to do with it a little bit. Uh, and we're really excited for where we're going next year, uh, or this year rather with mathematics. Uh, E L A, uh, went up, went up by two percent, uh, up to fifty-three percent, so above that fifty percent mark. Uh, so overall, the district, it would be, uh, an overall improvement as measured by the state because of our improvement in science, and it's a push between, uh, E L A and math. All right, E L A. So this is a comparison of Little Ferry to the state of New Jersey. So Little Ferry is your yellow line, and the state of New Jersey averages are your green line, so you can skip across. Um, the majority of the grade levels, you're either at or above the state of New Jersey and their overall performance uh, at each grade level. I'll break it down to grade levels a bit more, uh, but this just gives you a little bit of a measure of how we're comparing. Um, you know, grade three and grade eight are always the most challenging. Uh, grade three is their first time taking this assessment. It's a big bonus assessment. Uh, so we were right on track with where the state of New Jersey, uh, fell, and we were just below, uh, in eighth grade. That's one of the more challenging years. At that point, the students are already into high school, accepted into high school, uh, and are not as engaged. Uh, this is a breakdown by grade level. So, uh, from left to right, grade three to grade eight, uh, and from bottom to top, you'll have your level one in red, level two in orange, level three in yellow, in green is your level four passing, and level five is exceeding. Uh, so you can see those scores going across. Uh, we did really nice, we, you know, we're averaging in the high forties, uh, to mid-fifties, uh, across the district. All right, this is an apples-to-orange comparison. I call it that because it's comparing year to year, grade level versus grade level. Uh, so this is not each cohort, but how each one has done year to year. So from left to right, again, grade three through grade eight, color-coded by the year with that gap for the COVID years there. Uh, so in grade three, there was an overall one percent increase in the E L A. Grade four, uh, went down four percent. Grade five up one, grade six up three, grade seven up eight, uh, or a student, grade seven up eight, and grade eight up six percent. And you can see the trajectory over the past couple of years. Apples-to-apples, it's cohort-to-cohort. So grade three, it's their first year taking the assessment, so there's no comparison for them. Uh, next, you can see grade four, who had a nice increase of eleven percent. Uh, grade five took a small dip, uh, down five percent overall in comparison. Uh, grade six made steady progress throughout their, um, time taking the assessment, growing each year, up six percent this past year. Uh, grade seven took another little bit of a slide, uh, going into, uh, their final year in eighth grade, and then eighth grade took a dip from the previous year, um, which when you compare eighth grades to eighth grades is typical. Uh, and as you could tell from the previous slide, we're still on par with the state of New Jersey. Uh, it's just a matter of that, uh, motivation piece for those eighth graders. All right, math results. Uh, this is our comparison to the state of New Jersey, Little Ferry being yellow, the state being green. Uh, again, grade three through, uh, starting on your left, algebra being all the way up right. Uh, so you can see that we're a bit below in some, uh, a bit above in others, and then well above in algebra. Uh, so we are, you know, it's kind of scattered across as you, as you look across, uh, just a touch below the state or just at the state, and in the algebra case, well above the state. This is a breakdown of the scores, uh, per grade as well as algebra. Same, uh, five scales, red being, uh, a one, orange being a two, yellow being a three, green being a four, which is passing score, and blue being a five, exceeding score. Um, so the averages are in, uh, generally in the thirties to forties, uh, in our math. With algebra being our good outlier at eight of a session. Apples-to-orange comparisons, you can see each grade level versus the previous year grade levels. Uh, so some, some decreases and some very large increases in there. Uh, grade three, it's always been in the forties for the past couple of years. Uh, grade four had a, had a decrease last year overall. Grade five had a really big jump compared to the previous year. Uh, grade six took a little bit of a dip. Uh, grade seven going up two percent, eight up six percent, uh, and, you know, hovering near that state average, and algebra taking, uh, a little bit of a dip as well. Uh, one, one of the bits of feedback we did get from, uh, CUSAC, uh, from the county education specialists, were that we should enroll more students into our algebra courses so that more students have the opportunity to take higher level math classes. That's something we have taken into consideration, uh, for this year. Uh, and they actually said that, you know, while I was very proud of that one hundred number last year, uh, they said it shouldn't be that high, that you should be challenging more students.
Word for word.
Word for word. Uh, this is apples-to-apples, cohort versus cohort, so left to right. Uh, on the left, uh, grade three, it's their first time taking assessment, assessment. All the way to the right, algebra's their only time taking algebra assessment. Uh, but in the middle, you can see, um, how they did. So we did, uh, that cohort of grade four, um, did have a drop, grade five, progressing up a little bit. Grade six made, really made some great strides last year, uh, from where they were the previous year. A small drop in grade seven, uh, and a small drop in grade eight. It's double asterisks there because, uh, a quarter of the class is in algebra, so it, it, it skews those numbers. All right, science. So two grade levels taken for us, grades five and grade eight. This is a comparison of Little Ferry to the state of New Jersey to grade five. Uh, we outperformed the state of New Jersey by nearly three percent. Uh, grade eight was just below the state of New Jersey, uh, by about four and a half percent. Uh, these are our overall scores over the past six years, uh, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five, with the COVID gaps in there, and you can see we have returned to our pre-pandemic levels, uh, which is one of the few districts that has been able to do that. Uh, this is a breakdown of level one through level four for science, with red being, uh, a one, orange two, green a three, which is passing, and, uh, blue being a four, which is see our score across, uh, both grade five and grade eight. All right, so what do we do with the data? What are our next steps? Uh, so data analysis. So all the teachers got a lo- lovely blast email from me, which they get a lot of, uh, to set up time for a, uh, data chat starting next week, so we're going to use not only the NJSLA data, but our local data through iReady, cadence, uh, early literacy screeners at the younger ages, uh, and Delta Math to really pinpoint, uh, where our students are and where they can go, as well as some reflection on how our students did the year before. Uh, something new that we are doing a slow and effective rollout is edge climber. So right now, we're using data walls, um, which are big Excel or Google Sheets, um, that display all the data. They're a little bit cumbersome to, to see. That's why I'm not showing them to you. I break them down into graphs and charts for you all. Uh, but edge climber will do a lot of that legwork, uh, saving us a lot of time, so we're excited for that. Uh, K to two phonics, we started a double dose, uh, providing interventionists with the opportunity to be either in the grade level or, uh, you know, supplementing services twice, giving our students a bit more in those foundational, uh, years, K to two. Uh, we're going to continue with the bubble boost, but hyper focusing on those students who are just below, uh, that benchmark of that seven forty to seven forty-nine. Uh, and we hope to continue our rise and shine, uh, morning club, uh, meeting every morning, focusing on math as soon as that title fund, uh, comes through. Uh, we're also continuing our winning period. Uh, that's a what I need now. It supplements and does not supplant instructional time, so that's when students are pulled for their ESL services, when they're pulled for intervention, uh, as well as gifted and talented, so they're not missing any instruction. That's been a really, uh, successful time. Uh, and I really got to give kudos to our middle school, uh, staff, who, you know, in a non-graded, slightly unstructured period, have really taken it, you know, by the reins, uh, to maximize what that period is, uh, and optimize the opportunities for our students. Uh, some other next, next steps. Uh, we've released our portrait of our knight, which is kind peer, noble classmate, inquisitive learner, goal-oriented student, hard-working scholar, and thoughtful schoolmate, which will drive our, uh, not only our students of month, starting, uh, which you'll see next month, as well as initiatives every day, uh, just to build that positive proactive school, uh, community and culture. Uh, we're doing a reframing behavior PLC, which really focuses on being uh, proactive in how we manage student behaviors and challenges based on their perspectives, awareness, uh, relationships and actions with students. Uh, we also have a, a reading and writing, uh, literature. We also have a reading and writing literacy initiative. Dear Time, which some of you may remember from when you were a student or when your kids were students, it's drop everything and read. And it really allows our students to device spray and in an actual novel as opposed to reading on a phone, device or ProVox. And then in the middle school, they're doing monthly reading projects to increase those opportunities.
Like you're really impressive. Okay, you did test for science, because I had a, did they take it in fifth and then eighth? See a dip in the eighth grade from, is it cumulative from what the kids learned from fifth to eighth?
Oh yes, so the fifth grade assessment is on the content they've learned from third, fourth and fifth grade. The eighth grade assessment is on what they've learned from sixth, seventh and eighth grade, so this cumulative assessment.
And thank you. And then the algebra, I do appreciate, I do appreciate what CUSAC has recommended to add more students to learn the algebra or within that learning all about.
It's an interesting recommendation. You're saying if you're capable, that potentially will be passing in eighth grade and putting them into algebra.
We saw it towards.
In theory, that's possible. Because now it's that, they might not pass the algebra, but they would have passed.
The best.
The best. But in my opinion, the state wanted, they didn't like the high percentage of people passed. Hundred and eighty-five and eighty-eight, so how do you bring the number down? Put more kids there. So I don't think they're intentionless or as well, but yes, it would be a great opportunity for our students to dig an algebra course and hopefully do well. It'd be a good opportunity.
Yeah.
You can increase those numbers this year?
Yes.
And how many did we have previous?
Last, last year there was fifteen, this year there's, there's one.
Double.
Yeah.
On the science, like how do you grade more in content based or is it just maybe with our programs not aligned to the what testing is, I'm just curious.
I don't think it's that our programs aren't aligned, I think that.
I mean, not that they're not aligned, but maybe which, I'm just curious why, why such a change?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think a lot of it is motivation. The fifth grade is still, still like your teacher, you still like school, you're still very engaged. Eighth grade, you get a little bit of senioritis, so they take the assessment in May, we did take it early on in the years. We did see some improvement, we took it as one of our first assessments. It's a challenging two-day assessment, total of, you know, two, four, forty-five minute sections. You know, this year we've invested a lot and I got to thank Ms. Jost, Ms. Keen, Ms. Lato, Lato and Sina, my full names. And this cat, they've really invested in looking at the released items from NJSLA and infusing them. They started to do that last year about mid-year and this year they're doing it not only throughout the wind time, but throughout the year. And we hope that that muscle memory, if you will, of them having more time practicing those problems will benefit them. It's a little bit of a struggle because there's only so many released items. So Ms. Jost went and looked at the New York regions as well as other state assessments around so that we can, you know, our kids on their toes, on their game. And, you know, really start to challenge them to get them ready to take a regular assessment. The science assessment will be the same, there is no change to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job, Mr. Dunn. Thank you. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn and Mr. Zivich. Kind of show them off a little bit. All right, well, I will come to Mr. Gomez for the board secretary report.
Good evening, everyone. So we closed July and August of financial reports. This year, we actually closed the twenty-four, twenty-five year in late July. You know, it's part of my staff, I use this, it's not happening. So right now, we're all brought up, we are ahead of what the statute requires to do. So in August, we had a visit from our auditors and we completed the field work for the general fund. They'll be coming back to do the grants, the reason they have to come back is those grants don't close till September thirty. So we got them in, we got them out earlier than ever. In terms of the projects, we completed all of the major projects we're doing this summer, except for the community eventuaries that were waiting on some parts that should be done hopefully tomorrow. We did some paving, two new bathrooms, I don't know if anybody's visited them, it's nice. And other projects that, you know, small projects. For food service, we don't have a big update, but to give you an idea, so all students carry over their status, they're being reduced for thirty days to the beginning of the year. But we've already updated three hundred and seventy-three of those records. The total free and reduced right now, which includes the carryover, it's four hundred and sixty-nine. So I'll have a more extensive report once it closes up. So we've been processing a lot quicker than any other year. That's all I have.
Thanks so much, Mr. Smith. Mrs. Rattoli, you have a personal note. Matt earlier this, 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 they've done a terrible, they've been, they've been. Thank you. Tell, I don't think there was transportation there, was there? No meeting, but the transportation, as far as prices, it went well, so nothing to report on. And then as far as the expansion committee goes, I don't know if anybody has kicked their head around construction across the street. I know I do it every other day or so. There's this massive pile of dirt, which is very exciting, construction has sort of resumed. The retaining wall's up, so that's sort of going to be that little separation between, you know, the homes and the, yeah, and the school itself. I believe we're waiting on a permit right now from DCA to continue the construction underneath the building. So we're waiting on that, but progress, we're making great progress and so far, we're still on target. Anything to add, Mr. Parapata?
No, no.
Great. Mr. Borisak, the burly is on the board?
I'm going to have reported attendance at nine eleven, so I'm on the board, totally, and I just lost the Cooper's, Mr. Parapata, I have the eighth grade is there. A really nice, I lost the celebration, so I'm really, it was so intense. Speakers actually tried to get that, did a really good job.
Yeah, we found that Saturday.
That might be what I think.
Yeah, we find he starts at one o'clock over at. All right, and then Mr. Fytrus for the Ritual Park, please.
Yeah, Ritual Park, Ritual Park, I had a meeting yesterday, first meeting of the school year. Dr. Visskanyan, good presentation, there were a lot of talking about school and all new changes. School is, high school is actually thinking a lot of these changes year over year and over the last couple of years. They, they have, they have there and it's changed since, you know. It's been infrastructure in school fixing a lot of things, really turning out to be a really nice place to go. And anybody who's interested, personally should, it's really, it's the eighth graders that are now looking at high school. Talk about working, working more closely again with Ritual, with last school, probably rather. Getting eighth graders to go over there and visit and just trying to be more of a team between us. Right, it's done, eventually quite a bit, we need to stay just like, in a community game, we do that, right? So, for good things, it's exciting, so to see you, we're promoting that relationship.
Due to that point, we do have a line call this year.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Cana for NJSPA.
The SPA has a meeting in the month.
Great, thank you. Well, that will open it up to public comment on agenda items only.
Our winner of the day of tonight, the day of is to the sidebar agreement with the LFPA, it's be resolved. By the recognition superintendent of schools, the board approves following sidebar agreement with the Little Ferry Education Association, LFPA. For the twenty-two thousand point three, two thousand twenty-seven contract, the change of titles to the following sports from twenty-six eighty-two to thirty-two eighty-two in two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six and from twenty-seven ninety-nine. Twenty-seven seventy-nine to thirty-four oh-one in twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. For the following sports, which are baseball, soccer and softball. This was just an oversight, I think, if we didn't have these two sports. So it was recommended to the board of leadership, so the board will be brought in at this.
All right, we'll now take a block vote on F thirty-four to F thirty-six, DO one forty-one to DO one forty-five, P ninety-six to P one oh-four, F A seven, C fifteen and sixteen. P oh-seven, do I have a motion? Second?
Second. Ms. Rattoli?
Yes.
Fytrus?
Yeah.
Non?
Yes.
Ms. Zapsin?
Ms. Suzo's absent.
So Borisak?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Pravet?
Yes.
Or is it?
Now, we're up to public comment on non-agenda items? I have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.